Buddy. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our Budget Engagement Session. This is a live stream meeting. You'll notice that there's an opportunity to add questions in the chat bar. You can either click the anonymous box, or if you'd like to let us know your name, it would be lovely to hear who you are. Post your questions in the chat and we'll come to questions later. If for any reason your internet's running slow, you can pause. The stream will catch up and you can catch up that way. You won't miss anything. Alternatively, if for any reason you're finding the technical aspects aren't working, or your internet's going really, really slow, we will share a link to this session that we are recording after the meeting. So you can hear back and still contribute in that way. We're going to hear from councillor Phil Murphy with his presentation. We'll then come to any questions that come in during this meeting. And then after that session, we'll look at questions that have been pre-submitted. And we'll try to get through as many as we can because thank you so much for your contribution so far. We've had loads of great questions. This should be a really good discussion. I'd now like to welcome councillor Phil Murphy. Hi, Phil.
Hi, Abby. Thanks for the introduction and thanks to everybody for coming along. I'm going to take you through a slide deck of the budget proposals. We're out of consultation until the 17th of February. So thank you, as Abby said, for the contributions so far. And we'll try and answer as many questions as we can as we go through. Just so everybody knows, we're having to struggle a bit. I've got some technical problems here. So the staff are in the process of doing the slides for me rather than me doing it myself. So that might explain a few questions. So if we go to the first slide. Hello?
The slide's up, Phil, if you can see.
Sorry, I could see my screen had frozen. It's all right. It's released itself now. We'll carry on. Okay, sorry about that. Right, so as I say, welcome to the session. We're going to go through the budget proposals. And those of you who've been in on these sessions before will be aware that over the last four years, we've had to take substantial amounts of money out of the budget. Over the previous four years to this, it's been some £22 million. And we continue to face ongoing and significant financial and demographic demand-led pressures. £10.1 million nearly in 2122 is a significant sum to have to find. Despite an above-average funding settlement that we had from Welsh Government, for which we were very grateful, we remain the worst-funded council in Wales. And despite this, we continue to support the priorities of the council, including those set out in the winter COVID-19 plan. So the draft budget proposals look to support the priorities of the council. Specifically, they need to, they seek to recognise in full pay and pension-related spending pressures in our schooling system and the increasing demand placed on children's social care services, adult social care and children with our additional learning needs budget, as well as significant operational pressures in frontline services such as recycling waste and the passenger transfer unit. So given that background and the fact that we've had a very, well, really truly unprecedented year, we started off with severe flooding caused by storms Dennis and Kieran. And then we had the pandemic coming along. The response to that and its impact has been considerable, as you can imagine. Our costs are rising with our aging population. We have an increased demand for our core services. Resident expectations are high. Contract inflation and legislative impacts all take a toll on the amount of scope we've got to deal with the pressures that arise. And we do need to invest to look to the future, to ensure services offered remain relevant. They have to be appropriate to meet in the county's needs. And we do try all the time in making sure everything is as efficient and effective as we possibly can. And whilst government funding increases have been forthcoming in the last two years, they remain insufficient to cover the service pressures. And I'll come to that in the subsequent slide. We've had to make a one-off use of reserves to support the council alongside the response to the pandemic. And more about that later. So we continue to challenge services to sustain themselves rather than seek closure of services that matter. We always work on the basis that if things close, they never return. It's better to scale back than to withdraw. Next slide, please. So given the extent of pressures on services, we are being forced to consider an increase in council tax by 4.95% for 2122. We really have no other viable options than this. Our reserve funding, that's the contingency money that we've put aside to plan for the unexpected, is already at the lowest level that it can be to stick within the regulations. And as I'll explain in a minute, we're having to take a withdrawal from monies that we put aside for this purpose in any event. We're acutely aware of the problems that people have, particularly those who've lost their jobs or have had their jobs severely curtailed during COVID. And we will be referring people who have difficulties to the council tax department because there is the council tax reduction scheme. And also there's the 25% reduction for households or single-person households. So we move on to the next slide. And you can see there the impact of that increase in council tax, if it's confirmed by council in March. We always, for illustration purposes, use band D. And the band D amount will go up by some £68.35 a year, £1.31 a week. And you can see on the left-hand side, the house bands. So if you want to just dwell on that for a second, have a look and see what your house band is. And you'll be able to see what the MCC element only is of the council tax proposed increase. To that will be added telling community council precepts and the police precept. So there will be some slight adjustment to those figures you see on the right there. Next slide. So if you look at the band D equivalent throughout the counties in Wales, there's a perception that Monmash's council tax is high. Well, in actual fact, it's not if you look compared to the others. We're only just slightly to the right of centre there, more or less on the average line and considerably less than councils such as Blaenagwy, Merthyr, Neathport, Talbot and Bridge End. They have substantially higher amounts of band D council tax. And if you go to the next slide, you'll see why. Because we've got substantially greater numbers of houses in the higher bands. Welsh Government's view is that we can take substantially more in terms of council tax from our housing stock than should we say Blaenagwy can. Because as you see there, although I've been talking about band D figures, the bulk of houses in Blaenagwy are in band A. So they need to have a higher amount just to be able to collect that amount of money in. That really doesn't do us any favours though. And as you see there, the band D is 1,711 there compared to 1,380 in Monmash. So if we move to the next slide. Next slide, please. You'll see that we got a 3.9% increase in core funding from Welsh Government, slightly greater than the all-Wales average. Very welcome, as I said before, we've had two years now in which it's gone up. But we remain the worst-funded authority in Wales per head. I'll show you in a minute how that pans out on the chart. And you'll see that the settlement does not offset all the council's pressures and inflation. There's still a lot of risks. The subsequent pay awards will need to be accommodated. I know Rishi Sunak, the Chancellor, has said that all public service pay will be frozen with the exception of the very low paid on the NHS. But a lot of the pay awards in Wales are dealt with in Wales. And we still await the outcome of negotiations there. So if the pay awards are greater than the 1% we've modelled, that will give us an additional pressure. The Welsh Government have not yet said what all of our non-core grant funding is going to be. Information's still awaited on that. So there's a great deal of uncertainty about grants that will come our way other than the Revenue Support Grant. And we await the final settlement there. But we have had the provisional settlement, which this budget is based on. General capital funding from Welsh Government has been brought and maintained, which is very welcome. But again, clarification is awaited on specific capital funding schemes. We are aware that we will get COVID funding through the COVID hardship fund for the next year. Well, the next period up to the end of March, I should say. But we don't really know just where we are with the following year. So that remains a risk. And clarification is still awaited on release available to businesses. Again, the sooner we find out what that is, the better, so that we can advise our businesses accordingly. So next slide, please. So you'll see there that Monmash gets a substantial amount per head less than everybody else. We get £1,067 in aggregate external funding. That's the Revenue Support Grant plus the redistribution of business rates. And it's some £700 per person less than Blaenagwy. So a substantial amount of loss there. If we had the Blaenagwy funding, we'd have way over £50 million more. And we wouldn't be having the conversations that we are currently having. So if we can move to the next slide. You can see there that if you look at the effect that council tax has on our core funding, we have to collect 34.4% of our money in terms of council tax compared to the Welsh average of 23%. And if you were in Cofiri, they only have to collect some 18%. So we're set at a considerable disadvantage in the amount of Revenue Support Grant and aggregate external funding that we get from Welsh Government. We have to raise that substantial amount of our funding through council tax. So if we move to the next slide. That shows the effect on the previous slides of adding council tax in with the aggregate external funding. So even with us collecting that additional amount through council tax, we still have a substantial way to go if we're to catch up with everybody else. We obviously can't catch up with everybody else. We have to be as efficient as we possibly can. And we recognise this, probably the most efficient county in Wales. And you can see why we have to be, because we get so much less money to provide our services with. So next slide. So this budget recognises in full, as I said earlier, all pay and pension-related spending pressures in schools. It recognises the increasing demands placed on children and adult social services and children with additional learning needs. It responds to the need of the homelessness. Welsh Government have decreed that, particularly during the pandemic, and I would suspect on an ongoing basis, we have to make sure that nobody is sleeping rough. That's given us substantial additional costs. And we've had to take on additional staff and additional accommodation and bed and breakfast outlets to cope with that particular issue. So there's limited scope for frontline services to make efficiency savings. They've been making themselves more and more efficient for years. And inevitably, efficiencies that they're able to find now are getting less and less and less as we continue to drive for service efficiency and effectiveness. Fees and charges increases have been limited as much as we possibly can. And all local services are still being maintained. And like other authorities who have been closing services down, our services have not been closed down. They may be delivered in a different way, but they've not been closed down. So moving to the next slide. When we did our modelling, because we model a medium-term financial plan, we look at the next four years to try and anticipate the problems that are going to crop up. We anticipated an initial gap of some £5.3 million with £22.5 million over a four-year plan. But when we looked at this current year, the pressures were coming in at £10.1 million. And we only managed to identify savings of £3.7 million. And I'll go to them in subsequent slides. So if we move to the next one. You'll see that the gross expenditure for the authority is some £247 million. The specific service pressures, that £10.07 million that we spoke about earlier on is in there. And there were some full cost pressures related to payroll that had added some £11.5 million to the expenditure total. So we looked at the service efficiencies, that's £3,268,000. The implications of the settlement from Welsh Government is there at £3,700,000. Fees and charges increases and other methods of income generation have given us £415,000. And there's that additional council tax additionality that brings us up to £10,007,000. So you can see there that we were £748,000 short even by taking the measures that we'd taken. I said earlier that we'd managed to put £1.8 million aside from a VAT refund that we had, a one-off refund that it was in the previous year where they'd helped us to manage to have a surplus in that year. And we put that aside to assist in subsequent budgets. So this year, we're proposing taking £748,000 out of that specific reserve to help us with the budget rather than increase fees, charges and council tax anymore. So if we go to the next slide. You see what money we get. What do we do with it? Well, £55.6 million of it goes on children's services and children and young people in general, education and the like. That's some 34.2% of the budget. And £50.7 million, 31.2%, goes on social care and health. £24.1 goes in leisure centres, waste, highways, all of the doing things, if you like. And the rest of it is relatively small. You can see there that the actual costs of running the council are extremely small. In fact, a substantial amount of that £6.8 million is actually handed back through the council tax reduction scheme. So the actual amount that the council spends on running itself is very, very low. The vast bulk of the money that is generated is spent on essential frontline services. So moving to the next slide. It often helps for people who are not as familiar with the departmental titles that we keep bandying about, just to quickly run through what is in where. So in children and young people, that blue section on the previous pie chart, that's individual school budgets, school improvement and local authority-run services such as overseeing school admissions. And it does support children with additional learning needs. Social care and health, looking at services to adults, the most vulnerable children, public protection, trading standards and licensing. Next slide. Enterprise, that £24 million supports economic development in the county. As I said earlier, there's waste and recycling, high-rise maintenance, transport and operational services in there. And also in there is planning and housing services. Monlife is the department that we've got, the section that's set up to provide a wide range of tourism, leisure and culture services. And then the chief executives' units, that's the democratic process, legal services, communications, customer services, equalities, all of the background stuff that goes to smooth out the running of the council. And on the next slide, we show you the few more departments. Resources, that's the finance, all the ICT stuff, HR, payroll, emergency planning, all the assets that we own, all the property and the commercial activities. Corporate costs are the insurances, bank charges and the levies from the fire service and other statutory bodies. And we also have costs of borrowing and financing. And the financing comes from the sources that we've told you in the previous slides. So on the next slide. I've been mentioning this £10.1 million that we had in those financial pressures. And as I say, those are pressures which we can do nothing about. We've challenged them. We've done everything we can to mitigate them. But at the end of the day, we have to accept that those are the amounts that we've got to find. And they fall, as you can see there, principally on children and young people, social care and health and enterprise. Lot of pressure there, not so much in the others, but equally painful for those who are on much smaller budgets. So moving to the next slide, we'll give you some detail on that. So those pressures driven by demand, inflation and legislative changes were challenged, as I said. They've been managed, mitigated where we can. And to give you a flavour of what's in that £10.1 million, children with additional learning needs, there's a lot of pressure in there of £1.47 million. Children's services have got a lot of pressure. We'd looked after children. We only had some 192, I think it was, at the start of this current year. We're now on 222. A lot of those children are given to us by the courts. We can't always be certain that we're going to receive additional children. And a lot of them have got additional needs. Some of them are very, very expensive. The average cost of looking after a child with additional needs is anywhere between £45,000 and £500,000. So we really do have very substantial pressures coming in there. And with recycling and waste, there's increased cost of treatment and disposal, contract inflation. There's reduced grant funding. Welsh Government grants for recycling have been reduced over the years. And the bottom's fallen out of the recyclers market. We used to be able to sell our recyclers. Now it actually costs us money to have them taken away. And there's an extra £1.44 million there. Our passenger transport unit has got a lot of pressures. We have, partially because of a change in catchment for schools. But in any event, we've got a lot more children requiring statutory transport now. And in-street increase staffing costs and additional vehicle costs have had to come in to deal with that. Through the pandemic, we've lost an awful lot of our private higher income. And a lot of the contractors, external contractors, are handing their contracts back because they're no longer able to support them. So there's a pressure of £917,000 there. So moving on. Next slide. There's additional pressures within adult social care. We always make sure that we give appropriate funding as much as we can to external care providers. We always pay the foundation living wage and make sure that the care providers also pay that. We also have to maintain places in care homes where people have sadly died through the pandemic. And there's £250,000 that's had to be found to deliver, to address a shortfall in commissioned care in the Esga area. So that's £0.79 million there. I mentioned earlier about our pressures to respond to the needs of the homelessness. Welsh Government's revised policy position has resulted in a pressure of some £874,000. And the unbudgeted element of the pay award relates to what I was saying earlier about wages. We don't set pay rates. They are set for us externally. We have to abide by them. We've made representations with regards to it. But we await the actual outcome of those negotiations. And if they do come up more than we've actually budgeted for, that will be an additional pressure that we'll have to find some way of accommodating. And there's also service demand pressures, particularly in social services, that have given us a £918,000 pressure. Income shortfalls result from the indirect consequences of the pandemic or have been achieved, deemed not achievable, probably not achievable, in fact, actually not achievable because we've had to divert staff to deal with issues related to the pandemic. And that has diverted them from their substantive posts. And there's been a knock-on issue there. As regards income shortfalls as a direct result of the pandemic, like our investment income and things like that, those pressures have been taken up by Welsh Government with the Covid hardship fund. So we haven't had any substantial losses up to now. But we don't know what that's going to be on an ongoing basis. So there are corporate costs, there are increases in the precepts and levies from the South Wales Fire and Rescue Authority, the coroner's service. There are additional insurance premiums and pension strain costs due to people taking early retirement or redundancy. Next slide. So I said that we managed to get some £3.7 million worth of savings. The most notable there are in children and young people, where we closed Mountain House Special School and made alternative accommodation available for the small number of children that were affected by that closure. And that substantially is what's included in that £1,500,000 there. And we've taken a million pounds from corporate costs and levies. That is utilising the capitalisation directive, which allows us to use a very limited amount of capital receipts to support the revenue budget, where that revenue expenditure has been expended on the items that relate to identified capital expenditure. So we have been able to use some of our capital receipts. Most of the capital receipts we have, if we sell off land or building... Most of the capital receipts we have, if we sell off land or buildings or investments, they cannot be used for revenue purposes by law. And as I say, that million pounds is only in the very narrow window that's been allowed us. So moving on to the next slide. So after several years of making significant savings and challenging everybody to reinvent themselves, if you like. The pandemic has exacerbated the position. Obvious time has been diverted to the emergency response to make sure vital services are delivered. And as I said on that earlier slide, it stopped them from getting on with with their substantive jobs and having to turn their attention to the emergency response on the pandemic. And our annual overspend whilst being managed by a recovery plan does see very significant service pressures being carried through into 21, 22, a lot of which has had to do with the pandemic. So this challenging backdrop has made the budget challenge even more acute. And the savings package is therefore principally comprised as savings resulting from decisions that we've already taken. They just need to be worked through and we'll see the benefit of a lot of them in the coming up. That flexible use of capital receipts to fund the cost of service reform. Income generation from fees and charges. A lot of our income generation, particularly with regards to the Newport Leisure Park, were hit by forced closures of the businesses there. But those losses have been met from the Welsh Government Covid hardship fund. So there hasn't actually been the losses that everybody anticipated that we'd make there. And there has been some specific additional grant funding. So if you go to the next slide. You'll see that there was a net saving of 1.2 million from that Mountain House closure that I mentioned earlier on. The next item there is that million pounds that we took from capital receipts. And there's been savings made from decisions made, as I said earlier, with regards to recycling and waste. We altered the way that we deal with garden waste collection. Everybody's having wheelie bins now substantially bigger than those polypropylene bags. But we will be rolling out polypropylene bags following a successful trial to the rest of the county now with regards to your purple and pink airbag collections. And there's been substantially reduced tenures to landfill. In fact, all of the black bag waste goes to an energy from waste plant and is turned into electricity and products used in the building industry. And the food waste goes to an aerobic digester, again, used to generate electricity. So the amount of waste that actually goes to landfill is very substantially less than people imagine. Income generation from the anticipated increased income is that 415,000. But there is a recoupment of additional learning needs income of 252,000 included in that. So if we move to the next slide. There has been that bit of additional grant funding, 40 to 50 million. It's where Wales doesn't give us much and as you'll see there, we got 247,000 of it. That would be used to offset existing and relevant pressures in adult social care. So that's been ring fenced for that. During the pandemic, we've all been working from home. Sometimes easier than others, but we have been. And there will be an ongoing knock on effect of that. And so we've managed to identify some savings that we anticipate making from new ways of working as a result of the response to the pandemic. And we've identified 121,000 pounds worth of savings there. And we continue to look for further savings, but we've identified those already. Next slide. So all of the proposals that we've put forward at the moment have all been assessed early for equality impact, wellbeing and future generations considerations. But inevitably, the proposed increase in council tax from the original modelling of 1% to 4.95% is going to impact on the people, particularly those who, I said earlier, have been affected by being in their single households or having their income curtailed as a result of Covid. And so again, we refer those people to the council tax reduction scheme and to our benefits section who will help out whenever they can. And we have kept in fees and charges to an absolute minimum. Charges for domestic and residential care also means tested and capped to mitigate the impact of those on the lowest income. If it's external care, it's capped at a hundred pounds a week. If it's provided through residential care, then that is means tested. So on the next slide. We take a little bit of a look at the capital budget. We've more or less finished our Band A of the Future Schools Programme now. There's a little bit of snagging work still being done on the Cardiff and Monmouth schools. We're developing at pace now the business case for the Abigavenny 3 to 19 Band B school, which will replace the King Henry School in Abigavenny and make some other provisions so that we can make it a 3 to 19 straight through school. And then we'll be turning our attention to Band C when it's ready to be looked at. And that is in relation to Chepstow Comprehensive School. We have an ongoing commitment of the Cardiff Capital Region City Deal. That's an organisation which is look to improve in the gross value added of the area and look to bring regeneration, more jobs and better opportunities to people in the area and increase employment and investment opportunities. Borrowing for commercial investments and acquisitions. Well, our commercial risk appetite has been reviewed as a result of the pandemic. We've only made two substantial investments so far and that has been money, been as a result of borrowing money. That's all been supported by those investments. In fact, even with the reduction in the Newport Leisure Park, it's still covering its borrowing costs. So despite what it said in the August, we have not got those losses that were reported there. And we won't be making any further investments in the present circumstances unless something is brought forward that we can see is worthy of consideration. But that would be unlikely, I would have thought, in the current climate. The Seven View Care Home replacement is being delivered on the Craig Road site. And that we hope will start in July. And that is being funded through external sources. Investment is being made at current levels on our core programme with regards to highways, planned maintenance and county farms. We're maintaining our contribution to disabled facility grants at 900,000 and also maintaining our access for all contribution of 250,000, which deals with vulnerable adults. And there's that flexible use of one off capital receipts to the least of the cost of service reform, that million pounds that I spoke of before. So moving to the next slide. The Band B and C schools match funding element. That has been altered now from Band A. Band B gives us 65% from Welsh Government instead of the 50% we had before. We have to look at the match funding element of that. And that will be substantially through borrowing and from supported by savings that we'll make in the process. We have a backlog of maintenance, particularly with regards to buildings, roads, rights of way, culverts and bridges. And all of that, it has to be assessed, it's not in the budget. It is unbudgeted capital pressures that we've identified, that we have constantly keeping an eye on. If they become more urgent, for instance, road closures due to landslips. A lot of rain in the winters these days. So we're having to take remedial access to try and make sure that we don't have substantial landslips, particularly in the Wye Valley area. There's a new problem now with ash tree dieback disease and we're having to to see what our response needs to be for that. Additional ongoing problems regarding homelessness and housing related provision. So through our replacement local development plan, we're looking at low cost, affordable housing and trying to increase the availability of that. Invest in even more in digital infrastructure and additional transportation, active travel considerations. More healthy walking and cycling routes. Investment in community amenity sites, the waste recycling depot infrastructure has been improved. And we are looking at improving our leisure centres and other Monlife based assets. They will all be based on business cases where the income generated supports the money that would have to be borrowed to make those investments. We will not be making those investments out of anything that's related to this budget or the consequential ones, it will come from additional income. As happened in Monmouth, it's when we did up the Monmouth Leisure Centre, membership increased very substantially and that paid for itself. Climate emergency and carbon reduction commitments are a policy of the council. And we will continue to do everything we can to further those particular commitments. And we have to look at match funding for specific grant funding schemes. We're always keeping an eye on those things. So moving to the next slide. We have the continued impact of the pandemic on the council, of the local economy and its communities. We on a daily basis have to respond to pressures coming our way with regards to that. There is that risk that funding will not be forthcoming in the subsequent year. So we have to look to see how we are going to cope with any potential income losses resulting from that. We have those additional pressures, given the volatility of areas such as additional learning needs. We have to hope that we get early clarification on the specific grant funding because a lot of our services are only grant funded. So if those grants are taken away, those services could well be lost. And we have that business with regards to pay awards, as I said earlier, not determined by us. They are nationally set and we have to abide by them. We've modelled in 1%, if it's any more than that, it will give us a further pressure that we have to accommodate. And we will continue as long as we're able to make limited use of the capital receipts. But what you've got to bear in mind there is once we've used them, they've gone. And it's not a sustainable approach, but it's necessary this year if we're to keep charges and particularly council tax charges down. Albeit that they've gone up by a lot more than I know a lot of people would like to see. But I hope that this presentation has given you a flavour as why it's necessary to have to look at those sort of increases. So moving on to the next slide. The impact of the truly unprecedented pandemic has really hit public finances in general. The Chancellor was only able to announce a one year spending review rather than three years. So Welsh Government were hoping to give us an indicative settlement for 2022 and 23, 23, 24. They've not been able to do that because of the fact that they've only been told what their one year settlement is likely to be. And it's unclear as to what the approach of the UK government is likely to be on restoring public finances. And it's even less unclear as to how Welsh Government are going to deal with it because they have their own take on what is given to them, they make their own decisions. And there is an election coming up and we don't know what the outcome of that is going to be, obviously. And there may or may not be a change of emphasis depending on the outcome of that. So if we move on to the next slide. The budget proposals, as I said right at the beginning, open for consultation till the 17th of February. The councillors select committees are in the process of going through them with a fine tooth comb at the moment. And the public consultation, when it ends, will result in a final budget being put forward by Cabinet on the 3rd of March. And council tax setting and the actual setting of the budget will be by the full council on the 11th of March. So if we move on. And there's an invitation there, I know a lot of you on this call have already given us an indication as questions you wanted to ask. There is further information on our website. You can fill in the questionnaire there and make your views known. If you prefer to tweet us or contact us by other means of social media, by all means do. But at this stage, I think I'll rest my voice a minute, hand back to Abby who will be inviting anybody to make some questions known before we move on to the preset questions, which will be dealt with by our Section 151 officer, the Chief Officer for Revenues, Peter Davis. And I will interject with any information that I can as we go along. So Abby, can I move it back to you?
Yes, please. And the first question is relating to Jane, it's about recycling. So Jane asks, I may have missed it, what happens to our pink and purple recycling if there's no longer a source of income from selling it on? Is it now incinerated rather than recycled? I think you're on mute, Phil. Thank you. Sorry, Phil, we can't hear you. I'm not sure if Channel Kelly can please unmute Phil, is there a way of doing it? That way maybe? Sorry, I think Phil's having a technical challenge there, I'm not sure. And Peter, if you could perhaps answer that question? Or should we go to the other question and see if we can?
Thanks, thanks, I'm sorry. Yeah, that's okay. Do you want me to keep my camera off whilst the presentation is still up at the moment?
Sorry, I was also muted then. If you could please keep your camera on if you're responding to that question or perhaps we'll go to the question from Mr Woodfield while we try and see if Phil's mute button will work.
That's fine, okay, okay, I'll come to, I'll come to Mr Woodfield's question first. Yeah, yeah, that's absolutely fine, go on, go on.
And thank you, John Woodfield. And the question is in regard to banding comparison. What is the actual monetary gain via residents given the volume of discount and Welsh Government support to these areas? Suggesting real cost is less to individuals in these areas versus Monmouthshire?
Okay, so I guess calculating the actual Okay, so I guess calculating the actual monetary gain is probably quite a difficult thing to do simply in responding to the question, but I think as you touched on at the outset, we'll look to provide responses on the website to all the questions, but I think if I just take, you know, the core essence of the question and as Mr. Woodfield touched on, going back to I think what Phil was talking about in terms of the the banding comparison between Phil used obviously the council and comparing that with Blaine and Gwent. Now, it's important to sort of highlight that when Welsh Government actually constructs the settlement, the funding settlement for local authorities, it takes into account the ability of individual councils to raise council tax on the one hand. And that then has a consequential impact on how it distributes the funding, its core funding across local authorities. So in terms of the council tax element and the council tax income raising potential of the local authorities, that already takes into account, I guess, the people resident in those councils and the level of discounts and reliefs that they have traditionally looked to obtain or have been eligible to obtain such a single person discounts, et cetera. So that I guess that element of almost means testing is almost inbuilt within Welsh Government calculations. And then on the other side, once the council tax income raising power is taken into account in the calculation of the settlement, the distribution mechanism within Welsh Government's formula takes into account everything from matters of deprivation, pupil numbers, level of people who are in receipt of social care, et cetera. So the money is then distributed by Welsh Government on a very, it is very complicated, but on that basis. And what it tries to do is to afford councils with the right level of funding to support the needs of its communities. I think what can be seen, I think, from what Phil has presented back is that that does demonstrate and show and certainly per capita, both in terms of council tax itself and in fact, sorry, both in terms of Welsh Government funding per capita and in fact total funding per capita when we take council tax into account as well. We come off worst in Wales. And I think it goes back to what, you know, we continue to do in terms of lobbying Welsh Government either directly to Welsh Government or through the WLGA for a fairer funding formula and to make sure that, you know, we're not disadvantaged in that way. I think the final bit to just sort of say really is that I think the council, you know, has maintained frontline services now, you know, for quite some time since obviously the recession back in two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine. And what it's looked to do is to maintain frontline services. So whilst on the one hand, we receive less funding per capita on both fronts. You know, we've, I guess, you know, we've acted in the way that we have in terms of innovating and redesigning services and trying to deliver those lowest cost without actually allowing them to close. But to the heart of the problem, you know, it is a sense, I guess, of inequality really, that's Phil.
I think I've unmuted now, haven't I?
You have. Thank you, Phil.
Can I answer that question on the recyclers then?
Yes, please. Thank you.
The pink and purple bags are still processed. They still go through exactly the same process to go to the materials, recycling facility. They are not incinerated. Everything is exactly as it was. It's just that we don't get any money for it. I think that pretty well covered the point, if I remember.
That's great. Thank you. John Woodfield's come back again, please, Peter. He says, it appears to be a self perpetu, it seems to be self perpetuating. As if Blaine and Gwent remains as a high earner from Welsh Government contribution, MCC will never be able to achieve a higher proportion of the finances available.
I can contribute a little bit there before Peter comes back in.
Thank you.
We are together with other similar authorities to ourselves, trying to get it agreed by Welsh Government, independent review be made of the funding formula so that we can establish just what is currently wrong with it. When it was originally set up, it was reason we're doing the job, but it certainly doesn't now. We aren't on our own. We are the worst funded, but there are other authorities who have got the same problems as we've got that need to be recognised. But the way it is at the moment, I can't see there being any appreciable changes. Although this year, they did recognise some of the pressures, which is why we had above average settlement. I'd like to think that that would be ongoing, which would solve an awful lot of the problems that we've currently got. And would iron out some of the problems associated with the flaws in the funding formula. And so we are trying and hopefully a collective effort will bear fruit.
Thank you, Phil. That's all of the questions people have posted within the meeting chat. I wonder next if we'll go to some of the questions. I know that Chris Robinson's watching the session. He's pre-submitted some questions and comments. I'm not sure who could come to those next, please.
I think Peter's got those.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks, Ab. If you could just give me one moment, I just need to locate Chris's specific questions. Okay, here we go. Right, Abs, for the benefit of obviously those on the live stream, Chris, what do you want me to do? It's quite a long prelude and a set of questions, so is Jen either able to put those up in place of Phil's presentation? Because that was contained in one of my pre-prepared responses or would you like me to read it out?
Perhaps the essence of the key lines and the kind of subject area, maybe that would help for people watching.
That's absolutely fine. That's not a problem at all. So Chris's question is centered around the requirements under the Equalities Act two thousand and ten. And I guess Chris is looking for some surety really in terms of the robustness of our process. And I guess just to be clear on, for, you know, everybody on the call today. You know, there is a need not for us to just individually assess the wellbeing of future generation and equality impacted, the equality implications of budget proposals, but we need to do that as a whole. There needs to be an overall assessment as well undertaken. So just to be clear, we have undertaken that assessment. So where there have been impacts identified, there are individual assessments that have been undertaken. They are contained and appended to the budget reports that were released by Cabinet last Wednesday. And in addition to that, we have undertaken an overall wellbeing and future generation and equality impact assessment. And again, that is appended to the budget papers. The question then was one, sorry, the supplementary questions were then around whether we would be intending to review the impacts. So I guess there's a twofold response to this. First off, through the normal budget process, you know, as part of the consultation process that we're running now until the seventeenth of February, we will obviously capture all the necessary feedback and officers will then look to review that. And if there is, you know, obviously relevant points coming back that need to be considered and that need to feed into the, both the individual impact assessments and the overall one, then we will do that as part of the budget consultation process. And then an updated overall impact assessment will be contained in the final budget proposals when they go forward to Cabinet, back to Cabinet on the third of March. But then beyond that, officers that are responsible for implementing the budget proposals, they also hold a responsibility to review the impact of their proposals. And I guess if anything changes, such as either their inability to, their inability to mitigate any negative aspects, then there will be obviously a feedback mechanism there that will be dealt with by officers and as needed by members if any further changes and adjustments need to be made. And the further supplementary then is, which was one that I wasn't a hundred percent sure on what Chris was referring to. His question was whether the council was going to publish and will the council publish under what conditions in respect of the pandemic that the review will be triggered? Now, it's the council's view that the pandemic itself hasn't actually in fact, hasn't hindered our ability to assess the impact or in fact to consult on it. So, you know, we're not intending, you know, we're comfortable with the robustness of our process on that basis. Finally, Chris did make a point and it's something that we will look to take forward, I think, with the feedback form that we've put in place for the budget and that's on our website. So we will look to actually refine that in future years, just to actually add a specific question around wellbeing, future generation and equality impacts and seeking residents' views on that. But we're not looking to amend the form for this current budget round, but I think as you confirmed, as you confirmed to me earlier, that feedback form does have a section on it and where residents can obviously add comments, which is a bit of a free form question to which residents can answer. So hopefully that's, you know, a sufficiently comprehensive response to Chris's questions.
Thank you. And following on the previous discussion from John Woodfield. John said, do we have any idea when a review could be, take place? And Chris Robinson added to that saying, is it not now time for the council to formally challenge at law Welsh Governments and their distribution? I'm not sure if you've got any thoughts on that, please, Phil.
I'm not sure whether challenging at law is actually going to be of benefit. It would be fabulously expensive and probably counterproductive. The approach that we're taking is effectively if, if all of the interested authorities chip in a reasonable amount so that we can afford to have barristers look at it, we will be taking a legal approach, but not through the courts. I think that would be a far better use of taxpayers' money and probably more effective in the long run.
Thank you, Phil. We've now got a different question. This is pre-question number one and the question is, why do we continue to accept the lowest funding per head from the Welsh Government year on year? Should it not be treated unfairly nor asked to pay more for the previous service provision in Wales? So this is similar to what we've just talked about, isn't it, Phil?
Yeah, I think we've probably covered that. I don't think we should be asked to pay more for the same service provision in Wales either. It's, it's just a factor of the formula. The formula's wrong. We know it's wrong. We constantly challenge it, but as I said in my response just now, we're trying a new tack utilizing the law, but if we, if we can get some traction on that, then hopefully we can start to redress the balance.
That's lovely. Thank you, Phil. Next question, if we can go to it, please. Jan, that would be lovely. So the question is, I would like clarification of the changes to recycling as well as clarification of the charges mentioned in the report. Have we got any information about those, please, Phil?
Well, there was the items that I mentioned during the presentation. There was the garden waste collection services and that was that getting rid of the brown and green bags and replacing them with weedy bins. The polypropylene bag trial that was successful, that will save us a lot of money and stop us using single use plastic bags, which will help with our climate change agenda. And also some changes to household and waste recycling centres, making greater efficiencies there. And the closure of ASK, which was dragging us down financially. So I hope that covers it. In the main presentation, we actually put some figures on that. So those, those figures are available. In fact, they were as I went through. So if anybody wants to look at those slides on the website, they'll see the, they'll see the figures there.
Thank you very much, Phil. And we've noticed that people have started dropping off the live stream session. So I think, Phil, if we can please ask one more question and then people are very welcome to continue submitting their feedback on the online form we've got. And any other questions that we haven't got through, we'll post those on the website later. So if we could have question number three, please, Jan, and then I will post an announcement and put the link for anybody else. So the question is, other than council tax, I saw little detail on income generation. MCC has, I understand, agreed a sale of land to Melon Homes. Is this value of income detailed, please, Phil?
No, it is not. But I mentioned in the presentation that apart from limited use, and that was that million pounds that I referred to in the presentation, limited use of capital receipts in very clearly defined areas, we are not able to use capital receipts for revenue expenditure. So any sale of land would go into the capital budget and would be used for capital purposes such as the Twenty First Century Schools, match funding or any other, any other expenditure like that. Principally Twenty First Century Schools. The sale of land to Melon Homes is coming in over a number of years as phases of the development are completed. Melon Homes are a housing association, a registered social landlord. They are doing this on a semi-commercial basis, but they're not in a position to pay upfront. This will be a purpose-built development, dementia-friendly, incorporating the home, the replacement for the Seven View Home. So we've agreed with Melon that it's on a phased basis, but in any event, we couldn't use that money for the budget. But hopefully that covers that. If anybody wants to go to the mandates on the website, they'll get their further detail, but that will be far too much to deal with here. Back to you, Abby.
Thank you ever so much, Phil. Would you like to do one more question or should we leave it? Because I know various people have left the stream now.
You do another one if you want.
Yeah, wonderful. Okay, thank you. So question four, when all are impacted due to the pandemic and have varying degrees of income loss, food bank needs, job loss, would it not be prudent to delay the proposed salary increases in the education sector as we're all in this together? And this sector offers consistent job security and beneficial pension schemes unavailable to most?
Well, again, I covered that in the presentation. Pay awards for teaching staff in Wales and local government are determined by national pay bodies through consultation with employers, unions and key stakeholders. We have submitted evidence. We are hopeful that they would agree to the one percent that we've already built into the budget. But as I said earlier, if they do decide upon a higher increase in those areas, it would put additional strain on us and quite frankly, we'd have trouble accommodating it, but we'd have no choice but to accept it.
Thank you so much, Phil. So sorry, Jane said that she couldn't hear me then. Apologies for that. Thank you ever so much, everyone, for joining the session. I think various people have gone off to eat their tea, so thank you so much. It was lovely chatting to you all and I posted in chat all the links to various documents so you can get involved. and continue to ask your questions and hear responses from us. Thanks ever so much and enjoy the rest of your evening.
Cheers, Abby. See you soon.
Thanks all.